Welcome. Today is Monday, December 9th. This is our Board of Education meeting. Please stand and join us in the pledge. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice The mission of the White Plains School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening. I'd like to ask you to participate with us in a moment of silence and remembrance of Ms. Catherine Barber, nurse teacher at Our Lady of Sorrows from 1965 to 1984; Ms. Josephine Bracken, art teacher, Rosedale and George Washington, 1962 to 1982; Mr. John Daigle, business here at White Plains High School, 1956 to 1995; and Mr. George Higgins, Youth at Risk Coordinator and Grant Writer, 1989 to 2003. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move right into the recognition of our Fall Scholar Athletes.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I introduce Mr. Cameron and Principal Dougherty, first, I wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate all of our Fall Scholar Athletes and apologize in advance while I hate to admit my own mortality. I am a little under the weather, so I'm going to sit right here and not shake all of your hands. I want to make sure that I'm not a good sharer tonight. But I also want to recognize an outstanding athlete this evening, Alexa Reyna. Where's Alexa? Don't sit down, Alexa. Don't sit down. Alexa, who is an eighth grader, won the state championship. Congratulations, in a new Section 1 and school record time of 4:47.8. Alexa's time was over three seconds faster than her preliminary's time. Alexa has qualified as an All-American in the 500 Free. Her 200 Free time of 1:51.7 was a new school record. She placed fifth in the state championship in this event. And Alexa was also part of the 200 Free school relay team with Ava Ioneta, Luisa Nirhoff, Claire Weinstein, and Claire Weinstein with a time of 1:38.6. Congratulations, Alexa. Congratulations, everyone. Mr. Cameron.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight. I'd first like to thank the Board of Ed and Dr. Ricka. Every season, they give us this opportunity to showcase our student athletes who really spend a great deal of time with their sports, usually about three hours a day, as I don't have to tell the parents, right? Because you've been doing this for 12 to 15 to 18 years. But it's remarkable when we review our varsity athletes and see that this year, we had 178 students that had over 90 average in the fall. At the same time, we had three of our teams. Our girls swim team was undefeated and lead champions. Our girls field hockey team had 14 of their athletes with over 90 average, and they won the league for the first time in a long time. And our football team had eight Scholar Athletes, and they were lead champions this year, also for the first time in a very long time. So congratulations again. So we have 10 varsity teams in the fall, three for boys, seven for girls. I usually get about 10 emails between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. from these 10 coaches asking if they can go first. So with that said, I have to just kind of pick randomly. So the first team that's going to come up is our undefeated league champions, Coach Gil Martin and our girls swim team.
I want to thank the Board for their support during this season and to Mr. Cameron and Ms. Dougherty. We really appreciate all the time and effort went into this, and the support that the district gave us was just amazing. I'm going to call the people who are home studying first, so that'll be very quick. We do have 50 athletes, and our team average was 96.12. Gabriela Cabrera, Jennifer Chavez, Kaitlyn Clark, Giselle Cotal, Angelica Devila, Girvin De Lou, Nadalene Garcia, Cecilia Gomez, Sofia Inchenzo, Alyssa Kimball, Amanda Munchain, Megan Mulvey, Lily Nugan, Ariana Northfleet, Carolyn Poschott, Marley Reinmuth, Vanessa Remedios, Julitzi Reyes Martinez, Shannon Rogers, Marina Rosenthal, Kathleen Ryan, Carolyn Smith, Catherine Stanton, Zelda Sutter. These athletes are the ones that are here. And I'll just pass it to you, right, Coach? Our first one is Lauren Famica. Our second one is Itzel Garcia Ramirez. And you're going to stay right up here. Dulce Palacios. Thank you, Dulce. Eri E. Scalindo. Zen Taborda. Catalina Ramirez. Olivia Panos. Yaselin Martinez. Priya Kumar. Sherilyn Gutierrez. Astrid Gallegos. Nicole, are you okay? Evelyn Charchupula. Mary Lisa Capello. Now, I'd ask the state team to come up, please. Mary Lisa, I called you. Itzel and Mary Lisa, you already called. Come on up. Thank you. Okay, I just want to do this quickly. We had eight new school records set out of 13 possible events. Lizzie Torredo was our diving six and 11 dive new championship record, also qualified for states, fantastic athlete. Annalyn DiMarco was our 200 medley in our breaststroke relay, did a wonderful job for us. Annalyn also had the highest average of 118. Salma Reyna was our... is our backstroke specialist and a medley relay. I'm going to give it to you later. Margot Reyna, who had to leave for work, was also the state captain of the team, which was very exciting. She was elected out of everyone in this section. Luisa Nirhoff qualified in the 100 Free... I'm sorry, the 100 Fly, and also is a member of the record, school record-breaking medley relay, 200 Free and 400 Free relay. Ava Ioneta is a member of all three of those relays as well. Individually, she qualified in both 100 Free and the 50 Free. She finished eighth in the state in the 50 Free. Claire Weinstein, who is a seventh grader, is also a member of the medley 200 and 400 school setting relay. Individually, she finished ninth in the state in the 200 Free and fifth with her personal best time in the 500 Free. And certainly, last but not least, Alexa Reyna, as we mentioned, is our state champion in the 500 Free with a new Section 1 school record. She's an All-American, which is a huge, huge accomplishment. She's the 200 Free star. She was fifth place. She's a member of all three of our relays that set new records as well. But Alexa alone is part of five new school records that she has been able to achieve, which is so wonderful. And only eighth grader. I would like to thank the girls. We had a wonderful season, and they did a wonderful job. Thank you, girls.
Our next coach I'd like to call up is our varsity football coach, whose team won the league championship and finished with a 7-2 record. He has eight students that were Scholar Athletes.
Thank you very much. Very proud of the boys, these eight boys. Actually, only two of them are here this evening. As I look at the list, too, the other thing that's pretty important and stuff like that is almost all of these are multi-sport athletes involved in... We have kids involved in the school play. We have kids play three seasons sports, stuff like that. So they're just really well-rounded kids, and they should be really proud of their high grades in academics. One of the boys who's not here tonight, but he's already planning on going to Brown next year, Danny Ramirez, so he's unable to be here tonight, but he's going to Brown. We have another one, Ben Finkel, that hopefully is going Ivy League as well. Ben, you want to come up? I'll announce the other guys that aren't here, and then I'll announce Spencer. So Ashlyn Schener, who is a senior, also... Ashlyn, what are you doing? Come over, Ashlyn. You're hidden in a corner. All right, we have Caleb Gillen, Sam Keane, Christopher McGuire, Daniel Ramirez, I already said, is going to Brown, and Ben Sindley. And then we have Spencer Inglahart. Go on, Spencer. So thank you very much.
Our next coach up is Coach Adams, Sue Adams, with our varsity girls tennis team. The varsity girls tennis team was also selected as a New York State Public High School Scholar Athlete Team.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. I did want to say, I did not email you this morning, so I thought maybe I would sneak in at first tonight. But I tried that tactic this year, but I'm glad I didn't have to follow swimming because they did a great job. Really want to congratulate our team. We had a really nice season, had a great group of girls that we were working with. This is the eighth year in a row that our tennis team has made Scholar Athletes. So they really do a great job. When I look at their schedules, it's very challenging, and I'm always impressed that they can get everything done. I have three seniors that are not here tonight, Elena Coppola, Natalie Petty, and Georgia They are home studying for sure. We have an eighth grader that played with us this year, and she did an excellent job, and that is Ryan Kruskoff. Our highest average with a 98 average, Natasha Rappa, ninth grader. Another ninth grader that we had on the team this year, Melissa Trueblood. A newcomer to our school this year, we were really lucky to have Laura Stromberger on the team. She really did a nice job. She came from the German school, and it was really great having her this year on our team. Our lone junior that's going to be leading the charge next year, Victoria Jones. Senior captain, Chris Disgapoli. My two other captains that I have here, I'd like just to say one thing. They've been on the team since eighth grade. They really devoted a lot of their time to tennis. They spent two weeks in Africa this summer, working with underprivileged kids, and they carried on. We came home, we were donating our tennis balls and sending them over there. So they've been a pleasure to have on the team. I have Andy Friedman and Amanda Antonucci. Thank you very much.
Our next team up, quite an outstanding year, both on and off the field, is our varsity
Good evening, everyone. I just want to congratulate all the student athletes here tonight. Not only are you skilled enough to belong to a varsity team, but you also maintain an awesome GPA. So congratulations, everyone. Now, I want to brag about my girls. So we had a great season of firsts this year. First time we won our league since, I think, 1994. And in our league was actually one of the top teams. They won our conference, Horace Greeley. They also were state finalists, and we tied them. So it was a great job, girls. We also... We also hosted a sectional game here for the first time, and we won. We made it to the second round of sectionals. So an awesome season, girls. I'm so proud of you, I can't say that enough. So let me get this started. Anna Chotrick. Sarah DeSanto, senior captain. Violet Hamlin. Julia Ricky. Ava Weiner. Melanie Schwartz. Sarah Mello. Izzy Savarino, senior captain. Jess Zandt.
Okay, our next team up, also outstanding year on the field. They reached the quarterfinals of the Section 1 championships. I stopped up to give the coach the pins and certificates. She had a nice pack on her face. She had some, like a crown done, and she was going back at 5:00 today and said, "There's no way I can talk in front of 100 or 200 people." So I said, "I will call these girls down," our varsity girls soccer team. Girls were also selected as a New York State Public High School Team Award for 14 of the 20 girls were over a 90 average in the fall. Doesn't look like they're all here. So the first one is Winnie Mann. Jade Palmer. Tatiana Brown. Julia Reggio. Basketball team probably still practicing. Megan Dennis. Julia Velasquez. Elma's not here. Another basketball player, Sarah Sapash, not here. Delva's not here. And Kristen Russo. Outstanding season on and off the field, girls. Congratulations, girls varsity soccer. Okay, is Coach Kaitlyn here? I know they're having their team dinner tonight. Our volleyball team, also Section 1 quarterfinal finish, had an outstanding year. I should know, the 17-3, I think? Really fun team to watch. Great academic performance, great job by coach.
Hi, we had a great season this year. We have a bunch of really, really nice girls on the team, excellent athletes, as well as they do a really, really good job in the classroom. Every time I go back to school or I decide to take a class at night, and I'm coaching volleyball at the same time, and I'm working, I'm like, "How do these girls do it every single night with all these hours of homework?" But they are phenomenal people, so they are... We really appreciate the hard work that they put in. Alyssa Sharagaski, not here. Giselle LaRavier. Amelie Singer. Jeanette Cologne. Jordan Holman. Natalie Escobedo. India Newman. Sequoia Lane. Zoe Kovak. And our sole captain, all-league, all-section player, Carlianna Jones.
So as Dr. Ricka said, he wasn't feeling so well. One of our coaches, who everybody knows, Coach Singleton, came up to me after practice today and said he just was not feeling very well. And he said, "I have a first-year coach who could probably take this on for me." So Kalen Fitzevans, formerly Kalen Gil Martin, who is an alum and our first-year cross-country coach. She's going to be denouncing the boys' and girls' teams, and she's got quite a job here because we have 39 and 16.
I just want to start to thank Matt Cameron and Principal Dougherty for all your support and the Board of Education. So I'm going to start quickly because we have a lot of kids. I'm going to start with the boys. We had 47 boys on the team, and 45 of them made it. Our team average was 92.34. And our highest average was Uriel Corin, and he had the highest average in 99.38. So I'll start with the ones that are not here. Uriel Corin, Ryan McDonough, Yuki Wantabe, Julian Taub, Patrick Stanton, Lawson Roach, Lucas Rand, Henry O'Donnell, Brian Mulvey, Matthew Misette, Noah Maitland, Joshua Maitland, Elijah Lopez, Adrian Lepe, Gabriel Corin, Danielle Kai, Marco Greco, Louis Grassi, Jordan Garcia, Renzo Chunga, Marcus Chung, Abraham Cesaris. Okay, now we have the athletes that are here. Thank you. Aiden Morgan. Felipe Davencia. Mikey DeMillo. Aiden Bartlett. Okay, on to our girls team. 13 of 16 of our girls had an above average of 90. Our team average was 102.27. Yeah, my girls are smart. I'm going to start with the girls that are not here. Caroline Schick, Taylor Johnson, Jillian Pope, Brenna Hazen, Mia Luth, and Simone Brady, Rena Sandolini, Gordinia Gellen. Eighth grader, Abigail Roman. This young girl had an average of 117, Chloe Gagnon. Our last athlete is the... She won the league, and she has four White Plains High School new records, and she is on the all-county team, Zoe Fegensberg.
Congratulations, boys and girls cross-country team. Thanks for doing both teams, Coach. We have another high school, White Plains High School alum. We have another high school, White Plains High School alum. Jess, Coach Jess, come on down. Coach Jess is co-coach with her mom, Coach Christine Telesco. And Coach just graduated from college. She was a cheerleader for four years. And she really brought a whole 'nother level of expertise to our cheerleading team this fall. And it really showed. The girls were outstanding. There was a whole 'nother level of practice and preparation, and it really showed at the games and all the stuff that you did with the team. So thanks and great job.
Well, good evening, everybody. So as you said, this is my first year, and I was blessed with an amazing group of athletes. And they did awesome and welcomed me with open arms. And it was a great season. They did great on and off the mat. We had six athletes this season. Our first is senior captain Destiny Crooks. Tenth-grader Leylani Delgado. Another tenth-grader, Misa Glamod. Junior Madri Mazo. Tenth-grader Tiana Thompson. And lastly, junior Anaya Takori. Congratulations, everybody.
Last but certainly not least, our varsity boys soccer team. Coach Jack? Come on down.
You see, I don't send email like I call it, Les. Congratulations to all the athletes. Thank you to the Board of Education for the trust for the past nineteen years that I served with this beautiful school district. Soccer season was a very good season. We lost in a quarterfinal against a team that went to a semifinal and a final, a state champion, two to one in OT. We had a great, great season, a great boys, working very hard. I know those kids since they were little. Yeah, the six of them have made the Athletic Academy Award. So first one is Nadia Halden-Mikulic, so let's give her a round of applause. Jack Motta. Owen Chris with a hundred percent over here, this boy. Also, Chris, for all-league nominee. Chris Cardena. He's coming back next year, looking forward to that. Our captain, our leader on the team, Chris Aguirre. Also was all-league. Dave Espinoza, Ospina, Dave Ospina. We had six boys nominated for the all-sectional, two made it all-state sectional, two made it all-state, and four all-league. So congratulations to all of them and congratulations to everybody. Thank you.
So once again, I'd like to congratulate all one-hundred-and-seventy-eight of our student-athletes that had over a ninety average this fall and the seven varsity teams that were New York State Public High School Scholar-Athlete Teams. I'd also like, at this point, this is a job that's becoming harder and harder and harder, but if we can give a round of applause for our varsity coaches who do an outstanding job. And parents, we'll give you a round of applause because I know what it takes to get the kids to this point. So thank you. A lot of early mornings, a lot of getting kids out of bed, and a lot of convincing, and a lot of carpools, and a lot of driving, and a lot of money. I have an idea what it takes to get your kids to this level of participating in a varsity sport at a large high school in a very competitive environment. So thank you for all your support. Dr. Rika, Board of Ed, thank you. This concludes our program for this evening. Get home safely. Happy holidays. Thank you.
And so we are going to now have our brief announcements from the board. I'm going to just start off with a few things just briefly. I'm pleased to say that we started our meetings with regard to equity in the district, and I can't speak enough of the success, I believe, that we had in the first meeting. Our students were also participants. And we're just off to a great start. And just everyone was really enthusiastic and just really thankful to be part of that committee. We also had our sports Hall of Fame induction. Very, very sentimental ceremony in just seeing people being awarded or just recognized for their contribution to our sports program was awesome. I also attended the PTA council meeting. I also attended the security meeting that was here at the high school. Had a very... Just a wonderful opportunity on Saturday to spend some time with colleagues at their holiday celebration. And I'm always so thankful for that time to be around colleagues and just really give a hearty thank you for all that you do for our children. So I'll stop there if anyone wants to briefly, please.
I'll just add a few things. I attended the Eastview Veterans Day celebration, which I have to say is a highlight of my year. It's meaningful, it's moving, it integrates civics and learning through many different disciplines, student engagement. You know, it's so much ownership and pride by those sixth graders. It was really excellent. And the keynote speaker was Second Lieutenant Mitchell Stogel, who is a young alumnus of the high school and was a very impressive speaker. And I think he really connected with the students. I also attended the White Plains High School PTA meeting in November and the kindergarten transition meeting at Post Road, which was really well-attended. And also the special ed meeting for parents of preschool, special education, need students.
Great. Any other announcements?
Just quickly, again, attended the Veterans Day event at City Hall, where the middle school children played, so that was terrific. And had an opportunity to attend the section-one dinner for some of our, three of our White Plains field acting students.
Yeah.
And that was really wonderful to see as well. Again, just like tonight, a lot of terrific kids with great skills.
I attended reading night at Church Street School. Lot of fun. Read a great book, which I... He lives in a cave or something. It was great. And I attended a guidance advisory committee meeting and very, very excited about what's going on in the guidance department. You know, under the current regs, we have guidance now in the elementary levels. So when talking about the equity piece, that it's really going to open things up for our students from across the spectrum, starting at a very young age to begin to think about what's possible and what we can do. And then going from the middle school on up to the high school level. Sarah Hall's doing a great job, her team, all of the counselors. It was really very exciting.
Awesome. Anything else? All right. So next we'll move to public participation. Will there be any public participation? Okay, the public is invited, please. The public is invited to address the board and superintendent on any matter relating to White Plains Public Schools. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Please also respect the privacy and dignity of all individuals, whether students, faculty, administrators, or others. The administration will be happy to address privately any school-related matters of a more personal nature.
Great. Good evening. On behalf of the WPTA, I'd like to take a moment to thank Dr. Rika, Ms. Deb Hand, Ms. Jennifer Hammond King, and Ms. Barpolos for working collaboratively with the committee of teachers to add drop-down menus for the report cards at the elementary level. The new report card allows teachers to give feedback about their students' progress. It also allows teachers to communicate to the parents and guardians of the district concisely in both English and in Spanish. And we appreciate your support in this huge endeavor because we know it wasn't easy, and we look forward to continued collaboration. We'd also like to thank Dr. Rika for making the decision to go with that early dismissal. And if this... You know, if the superintendent thing doesn't work out, a weatherman is your next calling. Your communication was very good, and we value the contact time that we were able to have with the students, but also to keep teacher, staff, and the students safe. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm not quite sure that I'm in the right venue after what you just commented here, but I really wanted to leave some information with the board. I'm Joel Katz. I'm from a company called Use Again, and we run textile recycling programs for schools. I don't know if you are doing anything in terms of sustainability, but I have a brochure, and I'd like each one of you to be able to have it and look it over at your leisure and see if this program can work for you.
Please, yeah, you can leave the brochures with the clerk of the board.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Any more public participation? Okay. So next we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. IGW night tonight, is it? IGW. And I would also like to thank the WPTA as well for your partnership and certainly Dr. Hand and the committee for all that hard work on that, the drop-down. That was a big task.
Huge. Awesome.
But I think, you know, a task that is going to be beneficial to our children and their parents as well, so thank you.
Yeah, excellent.
And you know, it's always nice when someone says, "Thanks for a snow call." Doesn't happen often. So I'm just going to bank that one. Before I give you my brief update, Madam President and trustees, I would like to welcome our student liaison. So they're here this evening. Welcome.
Welcome. And I have to say, Esteban also sits on the equity committee, and we sat at the same table. And I think like, we have a bond now, okay? And would you just please tell us where you'll be going to college? And all the circumstances, the positive circumstances around that? If you don't, we will.
That was happening.
Speaking to the mic so it's on television.
So yeah, last week through Questbridge, I got matched to Stanford University.
And?
And I visited this weekend, my first time ever. And I plan to go there. And, yes.
Full ride.
Oh, yeah, a full ride.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, by the way.
Great job.
Congratulations, and we look forward... We look forward to even bigger things and more good news as the year progresses. So congratulations.
Oh, and on the same day, my friend, Daniel Ramirez, he got matched to Brown University on a full ride. Okay, so my name's Esteban Barrow. I'm a senior, White Plains High School.
I'm Lauren. I'm also a senior here.
So a lot of things are going on. As already mentioned, there's an equity conference where students from the White Plains High School are invited to discuss with faculty and teachers over equity and just access to, equal access to opportunities across the district. I personally think this meeting was really, really fun and really insightful. From talking with all the other students and all the other teachers, I think it was like a great experience. And everyone's looking forward to go to the next few meetings that are this month and next month. College acceptance season is already upon us, so like, kids are like finding out this month, next month, next few months, like where they're going to go. Fall sports ended, and girls' women did really good. There was an eighth grader who went to one states, actually. And it was, yeah, they were really good. Our winter sports also started. We had like a basketball event. It was really cool. And our basketball and hockey teams are looking really good. There's a kid, junior, Michael... My fault. Yeah, yeah. No, John Myers, my fault, my fault. John Myers, he's actually a... He's one of the six kids chosen to be the Hoods Hockey Super Six. So, yeah, he's doing great things. We had a junior and senior powder puff football event, and it went really good, as it does every year. And our school's also planning to do a volleyball powder puff, but we're just like switching the roles. And we had a senior class photo this Thursday. Our NHS started, and our juniors and seniors are getting their hours in. And there's also a few kids getting recruited for sports students. Yeah, like basketball and girls lacrosse on juniors and seniors. Yeah.
So I'm going to bring the mood down just a little bit, sorry. I'm basically going to be talking about the Halloween lockdown that happened here at the high school. But tonight, I want to focus more on what's happened in the last month and a half since that's taken place. If you want to know more about my perspective or other students' perspectives of what happened on the day of the lockdown, there are some articles up on the newspaper's website I would recommend, mainly because I wrote them. Okay. So there's been a pretty steep lack of communication to the students at our school following the lockdown. Most of us expected that an announcement would be made over the loudspeaker or in an assembly addressing the incident. But not only has this not happened, there has been radio silence. And this is incredibly concerning regarding the future safety of myself and my peers. But there was also no public statement made regarding the availability of social workers and other trusted staff members to talk to for the kids that were really struggling as a result of this lockdown. I know that kids really developed anxiety and stress and had a very hard time coming back to the school building in the days following the event. There was a small meeting held in the library a few days after the lockdown for students to actually talk about it. And it was announced right before it happened. So I was actually one of about thirteen students who showed up as the majority of kids didn't know that it was happening. And it was there that Principal Doherty explained to us just how the system malfunctioned, the lockdown system, what the point of the lockdown system is, and also the fact that the system has been getting installed since the summer. And this is very dissatisfying to hear because not only has there not been any communication since the lockdown, but that when we all came back to school this last September, we were all asking why digital clocks just suddenly sprang up in all of our classrooms and all of the rooms in the building. And our questions went unanswered, and our questions are still going unanswered. On Thursday, November fourteenth, at eleven oh five, me and Esteban were in our AP English class when the clock started flashing. And at this point, there was no sign saying lockdown. There was no blaring noise coming out of it, but it was flashing. And for a second, I really thought that we were about to enter another nightmare scenario only two weeks after the last one. And no member of the administration addressed this other than to say, "Ignore it, false alarm, no big deal," which was really hard to believe because that day at noon, only about an hour after that incident, there was a deadly school shooting in Santa Clarita, California. The next day, we all walked into school to see that all clocks had been either turned off or removed from classroom walls completely. Moving forward, I would like for the student body to be acknowledged when a traumatic event happens within our own halls. I would like new lights to be installed in every classroom because motion detector lights are fun until you're in a real lockdown situation. And multiple classrooms experienced this where someone's cough or sneeze motion, the motion of covering a cough or a sneeze, triggered some of the lights in the ceiling. And, you know, suddenly, you're in a room of about twenty-five to thirty people just kind of praying that you're going to be okay after a fluke light just turns on. I would also like that lockdown kits be available in each classroom with emergency first aid, water, flashlights, et cetera. I would like locks on all of the bathroom doors to provide a safe space for students who've become trapped in the halls during a lockdown because it's really disheartening for me as a babysitter and a tutor of elementary and middle school kids that the... for me as a babysitter and a tutor of elementary and middle school kids that the day I come back to tutor them after the lockdown, you know, they're all excited and they wanna know what happened here and I explain to them, you know, we had a false alarm, nothing to worry about. And then they start asking me, "Lauren, what do you do when you're in the bathroom and a lockdown's announced?" And I just had to sit there and tell them, "You're just gonna sit on the toilet, hide your feet, and hope nothing happens." Because you can't lock the door because there's no lock, you can't keep anyone from coming into the bathroom, and you just kinda have to hope that nothing's gonna happen. And I had to tell that to a 10-year-old and an 11-year-old and that was just incredibly disheartening. But most importantly, I would like for students to be thought of as a priority and not as an afterthought. We deserve to know why the system failed multiple times and what is being done to resolve it. Frankly, it could've been resolved at this point, but we really wouldn't know because no one's told us anything. But we deserve to know. We are the ones going to school every day and we shouldn't have to worry about whether a lockdown announcement is real or has just been triggered by a faulty system. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Lauren, thank you very much. And Esteban, thank you very much. Lauren, a couple of things. First, you don't ever have to wait to ask a question. If you have a question about anything and you feel like it's not being answered, wherever you are in the district, you can always reach right out to me. I think a number of the points that you brought up are, were very well articulated and are absolutely correct. Since the October 31st lockdown, we've taken and communicated, and I'm sorry that it didn't reach you, steps that we've taken since to not only increase communication with both faculty and staff members, but also our students during any potential emergent situations, as well as looking at equipment that we have available in our classrooms to make sure that, God forbid, something like that should occur again, that there is equipment there pertaining to concerns related to lights or locks. Happy to talk with you about those types of things as well. I think, though, you're absolutely right and I can tell you, the Board of Education and the administration, we share your frustration with the entire enterprise of having to have conversations about locking down or locking out or active shooter. These are horrific possibilities that have no place in our schools, let alone anywhere in society today. The unfortunate truth is that they do occur. And as you mentioned, you know, we had a tragic, another tragic school shooting and then just last week, we had two other shootings, one on a military base, one at Pearl Harbor. You know, these are disconcerting issues for all of us and as a student and, more importantly though, as a community member. I want you to know that you aren't an afterthought. In fact, all of this, every bit of it, is for you. You know, all of these steps, imperfect as they may be, they're for you. And it is terrible that you would have to talk about such a thing with a 10-year-old or an 11-year-old. It's terrible that I have to talk to a six-year-old at home about it. But at the end of it, know that we will always work to get better and that every bit of that effort is to protect you, to protect our faculty, members, our staff members, and our school community. So, while I do apologize for any breakdown in communication or lack of response, I'm happy to get you any information you need. I think you wrote wonderfully accurate articles. I think it was a service to the school community, quite frankly, and I appreciate it. And moving forward, we'll always look to improve, but thank you and thanks for engaging and sharing your thoughts. And by the way, you didn't bring the mood down with your truth. That's why we're here. You know, we're here for you. And so, if our service in one way or another can be improved, we wanna know about it. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. So, lots happening all throughout the district. We participated again in a safety community update meeting, safety and security, several of them, as we were just mentioning. I was also a participant at the Comp Controllers Security Roundtable where we were sharing some additional information about things that we might be able to do statewide to approach these issues in a uniform manner and in a more efficient manner. And so, you know, stay tuned, I'll provide any additional information that comes back. Tons of Thanksgiving all throughout the district. Our children and our staff members doing wonderful acts of kindness all throughout the community and beyond. And so, we're very proud and thankful for them and proud of that work. The Policy Committee met and we were very excited that we have 6,000 on this evening for approval and first read for sevens, eights, and nines. So, this is very big and very exciting. It is, yes, the winter weather tis the season. No, I do not wanna stand in front of a green screen ever, but I can tell you that we are doing our very best to keep our community updated and, you know, to the moment as we have information. To wit, I think Wednesday, they're calling for one to three inches locally, so we'll see. We'll keep you posted. Long-range planning has met and is working, getting ready to present our long-range plan to the Finance Committee and to the Board on January 8th. We're very excited about that. Master Planning, again, has met and we're looking forward to meeting with the Board of Education again and sharing some opportunities and possibilities for planning for the future. Again, very exciting. Budget 2020, 2021 is right around the corner and we'll be sharing information, all connected to the long-range plan, as well as future planning. And what you're gonna see very strongly interwoven throughout is not only continuity based on what we have been working toward in the district, but also an integration and infusion related to our desire to continue to break down barriers and provide equity in everything that we do. We are beginning our Castle Social Emotional Learning Audit tomorrow, so the folks from Castle will be in the district and will be meeting with our faculty, staff members, and I believe even some of the Board of Education members as well tomorrow. And we're meeting our second committee meeting, our Equity Committee meeting is on Wednesday. Congratulations to our Eastview performers and all of the performers who are gonna be taking the stage this week and next. Amazing shows, our children and our Fine Arts Department continue to outdo themselves each and every year. Please see our calendar for updates related to, or rather, times and dates related to the shows. We also have Family Read Night coming up at GW tomorrow. Fantastic. Can't wait. I think I'm reading Truman. I think that's what I'm reading. And of course, and most importantly, happy holidays to everybody. I know that everyone is gonna really, the kids especially, are gonna hate that full two weeks off this year. But good luck, moms and dads. We'll take 'em back on January 6th. And I hope everyone has a wonderful time with your families. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna move on to our summary action items. So, may I have a motion for summary action items from Section 4, including through Section 8? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I would like to call attention to Item B for donations and we would like to ask for the Board's acceptance with gratitude of the following very generous donations. A color printer from Sullivan Architecture PC for the high school art department, $100 from Mr. and Mrs. Michael Bandler for the Richard Leaps and Journalism Scholarship, $3,800 from the Friends of White Plains Public Schools for programs at Mamarone Avenue and Post Road Schools, $6,000 from the White Plains High School Alumni Association for two Alumni Association sports scholarships, $200 from Patrick and Carol Sheridan for the Richard Leaps and Journalism Scholarship, a shredder from the Lipman family for White Plains High School, a buddy bench in memory of Byron Duncan from Kerry Duncan for Church Street School. Thank you very much for those generous donations.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I'd like to move on to our only individual action item. May I have a motion for the adoption of Policy Section 6000? May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions?
I love you, Esther.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we're gonna move to Board Discussion. So, on our agenda, you have copies of Policy 7000, 8000, 9000 for first reading. We've already, Policy Committee has already gone through those, so they are presented to you, to everyone for first reading.
Thank you for your work.
Read it over the holidays.
Yeah. So, next we'll move into Board Committee Reports. I know.
We had a wonderful Curriculum Committee Meeting where we discussed offerings that are coming for next year, which are really exciting, which I won't mention yet, right? Sit tight. Sit tight. But there were some, in January, but there's some really exciting things coming up. And again, I want to enroll back in school and take some of these courses because it looks different than-
You could pay tuition.
I could pay tuition. That's true. That's true. So, we had that and we had, we had an HR meeting that we really can't talk about, but it was a great meeting.
Finance met and had a marathon session on master planning and it's to be continued and we will be bringing back things to the Board and to the public, so we're looking forward to that.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think Joe mentioned something that's important. I mean, the master planning meeting, probably six or eight hours of our time over the last month or so and certainly considerable, a lot more time for the folks preparing for the meetings and then sitting in on them. The school facilities are in very good condition, but as we find out, they require a lot of capital to keep them in good condition. We have a lot of buildings and I think as we look through this, this is gonna be part of a larger Board discussion. And I think what we're trying to do and Anne is leading this process is just trying to put together a five, 10, 15, 20-year plan for the school district so that when eventually we're not here and there's other people here, there's a, we can, everyone can pick up where we left off and then the next person can take, the next people can take the baton and really make sure that our facilities are in good shape for our students and our staff so it's a place for 21st century learning.
And really a stewardship process.
It is a stewardship process.
In terms of, you know, planning for the future and ensuring that-
I mean, our kids benefit today from the Boards and the community decisions of the past and it's part of that. And I think Cheryl makes a great point there. It is about fulfilling that stewardship. And as we go through this process, there's a lot of things on that list that we really, really want that probably won't make that list. And there's a lot of boring things that a lot of people won't actually see that have to get done to make sure that our facilities stay in one piece. And it's a process and again, it's been really great, we got really great people working on it and again, it's, we're getting into larger Board and Community Discussion and there are members of the community on this right now. So, this is nothing that, this isn't something that's happening in a vacuum right now either. It's a process that we're working through.
And there's been a lot of input that-
From, yeah, from users, from staff, from community.
That began the process, so now it's a refinement.
It is, but it's a lot to get your arms around and again, it's something that I think we all can understand because it's buildings and sometimes when we get to the abstract items, it's difficult to grasp our hands around it, but again, it'll be part of a larger discussion.
Thank you. I will say, our facilities are used so much and I use them a lot and it's really a go-to and I can say unequivocally that our community is very grateful to be able to have access to the facilities to enjoy and just have recreation, so just wanted to add that. So, next we have our District-wide Safety Team handout from that meeting, the PowerPoint deck. I think that was the one that you've been, Dr. Rick, have been presenting, but we now have it to review as well and I'm sure if there are any questions, we will let you know.
Absolutely.
Anything else am I forgetting? I don't think, nope. So, before we close, I just wanna say thank you to John Mishavitz and Ray Ojeda for taping us tonight, also on behalf of all of us to wish everyone a happy and a safe holiday season. We look forward to seeing you in the new year, ready to go, 2020, woo-hoo! And thank you for everything that you do. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.